So our first workshop, I've got it right here somewhere. Is it Animal Services?
Yes.
Okay.
You need that? I got it. I got it right there.
You are awesome. Thank you. Director Rickert, thank you.
Oh, hold on.
Whoop.
You have to call to order amendments, the agenda, approve the agenda.
Call to order. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
None, sir.
Director Rickert, take over. Thank you.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Okay. Any further discussion? We've got 20 people here wanting to... Call for the question, please.
Mr. Pash.
Aye.
Vice Chair Herschel.
Yes.
Aye.
Our voice.
Thank you.
Heard unanimously.
Your turn, Director Rickert. Director Rickert, thank you.
So the purpose of this workshop is really to discuss the current level of animal services that we are going to provide in the county. The...so we invited several members of the community there. Government partners, public animal care providers to help provide input on this so we can, as a county, kind of devise a plan on how we want to move animal services forward. There's kind of a second part to this workshop as well, but it is our current agreement with Wild Rivers Animal Shelters. Currently, all licensing fees are remitted to them, which it just isn't sustainable as far as code enforcement's budget goes. Those funds need to be reverted back to the county, or need to be kept within the county to not only fund the department's budget, but also to work with the many different organizations that are out there. So that's really what this workshop is about. I know that Mr. Fortman and Code Enforcement, and also Bill Ostrowski with Wild Rivers Animal Shelter, both have some comments that they want to make, or presentations that they want to make. So if it's the will of the board, we can start off with them, but...
Certainly. Officer Fortman, welcome again.
Long time no see. Good afternoon. I just want to make a couple of quick comments. I'm getting shorter. Commissioner Pash should know that. I just want to set some of the history here, and I want to hear what people have to say. My parents taught me always to end with a positive, so I'll start with a negative. What this meeting is about is not about increasing dog licensing fees or revenue for the county, per se. Dog licenses in Oregon have been around since 1950s. Currently, that license fee by Oregon law says that only that money can only be used for animal services. So we're not looking to replace staff or anything else. It can only be used for the benefit of animals. As Director Rickert said, the money's currently all going to one shelter, and what we're proposing is, we've already talked about animal licensing fees and the county taking back over control, but getting, using that money to pay for the valuable programs countywide through multiple shelters and multiple communities. So we're not looking for an increase. This meeting is not about a complaint about the shelter services that have been provided to the county. And there are two shelters in this county. Both provide excellent service to the community, and I'm honored to work with them every single day. So this is not a complaint session about the shelters. This is not a complaint session or forum for us to recommend new laws to the county, although we've talked about in the past, and the board has said we can go forward and present a couple revisions to the animal code ordinance, and that'll be at another point. What I'd like to do is talk about, just give the board a brief history and the community that is participating. Animal control and animal services were in the state ORSes since the 1950s. Everywhere in the state of Oregon since 1950, you had to have a dog license. You had to have them under control. You had to have all these things. In 1960s, the state legislature passed a new statute allowing counties to create animal controlled districts and take over the responsibility from the state in administering the program. To fund that, it gave the animal control district the authority to collect the licensing fees and disperse them according to the state law, again, only for animals. From the 19...the board created an animal control district which serves all of Curry County, including the three incorporated cities. The state law does not allow currently the cities to create their own animal control district, which comes up on sometimes on funding issues. Cities can enforce their own animal ordinances, okay? In 2012, the county elected to roll, for economic reasons, animal services to private industry. Contract was entered with Wild Rivers Animal Rescue's predecessors, Pennies for Pooches. And in that contract, the county deeded to Wild Rivers the county shelter, the county equipment, county vehicles, the authority to collect dog licenses, and to spend all of that money. It was an exclusive contract. What's in...the only thing that's in dispute in that contract was, if you talk to the county's perspective, the county thought not only would that organization be the shelter for the county, but they'd be the animal control provider for the county. The contract has the other position that they only took on the shelter, and there was some transition periods. And in fact, by the time I became involved in this back in 2018, that's essentially what they were doing when I started with the county as the code enforcement officer. In 2018, I first became involved with animal services mitigating disputes between the shelter and people trying to redeem their dogs and wasn't providing animal control services. But there were arguments about, was my dog legally taken? Was the impound fees correct? My dog was over the five days, and I had to work with the shelter, and they worked very positively with me in trying to solve these disputes between the citizens and that. But what I discovered in that process was that the system had worked, that every law enforcement agency in the county would bring dogs in, had combination to the shelter, walk into the shelter, put the dogs in the shelter, didn't put the proper required paperwork justifying the impounds as required by state law, and a lot of issues popped up. As Commissioner Pash approached me in 2019, I believe it was, early, to look at the possibility of code enforcement inheriting animal services, I said yes, because my background, besides being in law enforcement for 30 years, when I was in college, I was a year with animal control in San Mateo County and a state humane officer, went through all the training, and have a feeling and a lifelong pet owner. So that brings us up to where we're at now. Right now, the concerns I have with the money that's coming in for dog licenses is that we're underserving Port Orford, we're underserving Langlis, we don't serve Agnes, we don't pay for the programs that we should be paying, like a lot of counties. Training, low-cost spay and neuter, low-cost vaccination, animal behaviorless. We don't have those services that the county's controlling or booting out. Now, the two shelters have been providing those, so I don't want to mislead you, but they've been providing it out of their pocket and trying to live on the monies that we've given the one shelter for. But again, the other communities aren't out there. My code enforcement hasn't received a penny for all of our activities in the last year for any of our equipment. So in the last year since my department took over the code enforcement, the animal control part of this, I'm proud to say there's a decrease in the amount of leash law violations, of animals running loose. There's less animals getting run over by cars than there were a year ago. People, by having enforcement, start reacting and knowing that they need to comply with laws. What we found on the dog licensing, why we don't need, talk about increasing our dog licenses, is less than 0.05% of the dog owners in this county have a dog license, although 100% are supposed to have it. That's 0.5% generated last year $26,000. Nationally, statistics say that most communities equivalent to this should be seeing an 18% voluntary co-op licensing of their animals. If you licensed 18% of our animals at our current licensing fees, that's $450,000, way more than all the programs combined could be. So what would that mean? That would actually mean that if I'm still the animal control officer for the county, I'd be recommending substantial cuts in our dog licensing fees, even though we would be providing more programs. So the more licenses we have, the more we can provide, and it's dispersed among the people. So since my department has taken over, what have we increased in fees? The dog licenses in this county have not gone up in years. In fact, last year, discount went out for seniors. Cash discount went down, lowered it. This year, the board approved another discount for veterans. Free dog licensing for service animals. So we've lowered our cost to the community, not raised it, and that's what I'm saying. This is not about trying to raise fees. This is about providing the best programs for our community. So why is animal control important? Why is shelters important? First of all, shelters set the mood of how we treat our own families. Our pets are our families, and if we don't provide good shelter services for them, it's just as if we're not providing it for our own kids. So they're an integral part of it. Our veterinarians are an integral part of understanding it. Our outlawing pet vendors of educating people and giving...are the integral part of keeping our community safe. What is animal services? I should have started. Animal services is about keeping people and pets safe. You might say that our community's changed, and we've gone from a rural community where your dog could run for 20 acres and never see anybody, to a community where Commissioner Herschel and I live in, where it's more compact. What I tell people every day on dogs running at large is, not only is your dog going to get hurt, people are going to swerve their car, they're going to crash, they're going to kill, and you're going to be found, find out your insurance doesn't cover it, civil liabilities. What's the difference between now and 1966? Our animals have changed in those years. Our housing has changed. We no longer have Renton Tin and Lassie and the dogs that I grew up with. Now we have dogs that are, some of them are just total animals. Every week, I go to a house where there's animals in the front yard guarding the house that try to attack everything that walks by, including me, and when I talk to the owner, they go, "Well, they're guarding my house." Well, what about the little girl that's trying to come to your house and sell Girl Scout cookies? What happens when she crosses your property line? We need to educate. We need money to educate people and solve these problems. Since the pandemic has occurred, last year I figured out there was a season to animal control. We had the run-of-mill issues, and then during the summer, we had the bite season, where all the tourists would come in and their dogs would be biting people on the public beaches. And I've kind of gotten used to it. This year, my deputy and I respond to an aggressive animal call every single day. We're going to dog bites five, six times a week on these. And that's, I think, is just an outcropping of the pandemic and where we're at in society. We are called out two or three times a week on cruelty cases. We have seen an increase of abandonment of animals that we're having to take to our shelters because people can no longer afford them in this pandemic, and they dump them here. And it's not just our community dumping. We're the gateway from California, and half these animals come up and people go, "Oh, beautiful community. My dog will have a nice home here," and let it loose. So that's the history where we're at. Where I'm hoping where we go is that we need to address that our societies change. We have new animals, new pets. Having complaints in the last two weeks. 12 dogs, 100-pound dogs each, barking continually in a yard next to the neighbors. Yesterday, I was at a house where four dogs, three puppies and a dog, ran into the next-door neighbor who shares a common yard and attacked her and her child. I've been before this board before to say it's not just dogs. I hate to tell you again how many 250-pound pig coals I end up dealing with in people's homes, or ducks and chickens, and all the other animals that are out there that people now use as pets every single day. I'd like to see the money, I'd like to see the money for dog licenses increase. And we, the board has improved, we have instituted a new software program, and we're waiting for the resolution of the participants in this and to roll it out. And go to the public and say, "Here's what our concerns are, and let's educate. Here's what your dog license buys." And by the way, for people who don't know, the purpose of a dog license is that we verify that the animal's been received vaccine. That's first. Secondly, when we pick up a stray animal, that dog license is the way we drive it home. I have a chip in my dog, and I have a license on my dog. I have a scanner on my hip right now, but that scanner does us no good in the field. That dog license on their collar is a free ride home for the dog for the first time every 12 months. We don't even cite when we do that. And we say, "For the $25 current licensing fee, you just saved yourself a $440 ticket." The licenses have been used in civil actions for dispute of ownerships of animals. Couples break up, who owns the animal? I get that once a month in here. Again, what I'd like to see is that we come up with a plan to deal with the realities of today and our animals so that we can guarantee the safety of our people and our community, the safety of our pets, and the quality of life. No one wants to be next to a dog that's barking all the time, or biting them, or chasing them down the streets. And most of it's education and programs. And unfortunately, I'll end this by saying the only way we can get education and programs out there is by funding them. And that's why I'm critical. So again, I want to salute Wild Rivers Animal Rescue Service. I want to salute South Coast Humane, Happy Tales, Wolf's Dog Bakery, all of the people who have been on the front line dealing with animals without the county's involvement for years, keeping us together. And I think it's time that we get some directions and figure out what we're going to do in the future. The last thing I'm going to say to assure people, besides not looking for more money, more laws and all that, I was at a meeting with the same board this morning, where Curry County, to me, is a great county because you've given, under Article 10, the authority to make decisions about citating and not citing people. Curry County probably has the lowest citation rate in the state for everything, and definitely for animals. And the few times that we go writing citations is when we've had repetitive problems. So that's the history I'd like you to know, to know that these programs are possible with the money that's there in the thing, without touching the county budget. We just need to resolve the contracts so that we can collect those monies and put them out there, and then all of us in this room are asked to help promote licensing in the fields. South County's, South Coast Humane, didn't sell dog licenses. They now do. Wolf's Dog Bakery, Happy Tales, Town and Country, all stepped up to help us with this program. That's how we get this program moving forward. One thing I also forgot, we have one other obligation that does involve money. In the natural disaster Katrina, people refused to be rescued from their homes in floods because the rescuers back then wouldn't take their animals. FEMA now requires every county to have a program for emergency evacuation of animals. We started on that, but we need to have, again, the resources to be able to put out the last few things to get this up before we have the next major fire, and we're trying to do this. The software that this board has approved is giving us the information so we know where animals are in the back country. The property registration ordinance is a big one, so we know where people are. These are services that you folks have voted in and given to the community. And now I'd like to invite the community to talk about the services they think should be done.
Officer Fortman, you're going to stick around for questions, though, right?
I'm going to be here until you throw me out.
Bill Ostrowski, are you next, sir? One of our former Budget Committee members. Bill, you might want to pull that microphone down just a little bit when you're ready. Do you have the mouth?
Oh, here it is. Here, I'll do it. Just plug that in, and I'll get it. I think I can get it.
Eric's coming.
I got it, Eric. Which one you want? The agreement opened? I got it, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Can I control it from here or what?
Yeah, if you just hit the over button, but let me get it.
Why are we giving the mouth?
Just from the beginning. Here we go. There you go. And just hit the arrow over...oh, I'm sorry. Take the keyboard right there and hit the arrow over button, and that'll move it along.
Okay. Which, the down or up arrow key or what?
Side to side, I think. Nope, there it goes.
Thanks for inviting Wild Rivers Animal Rescue to this workshop.
Bill, you can take your mask off if you want.
All right. Thank you very much.
And pull that one microphone down a little bit on your right. There you go. Thank you.
Now I can breathe. Again, thank you for inviting Wild Rivers Animal Rescue to your workshop. I think this is a tremendous, important thing we're going to talk about. Currently, I'd like to just give you a little history. Wild Rivers Animal Rescue has entered into three different types of agreements with the county. The first is a service agreement, which was put together in August 2012, and that gave us the authority to do, you know, focus on impounding, licensing, handling the fees, and dog control. On May 20th, 2015, the county approved the county to transfer the property on Airport Way to Pennies for Pooches, which is now Wild Rivers Animal Rescue, for the sum of $1. The conveyance requires Wild Rivers Animal Rescue to operate the property as an animal shelter for a period of 20 years or until May 2035. The last agreement was amendment to the service agreement on 1/15/2015 to amend the, was an adoption to increase the adoption fees for impounded dogs from 65 to 100. Those are the only three known agreements that I know that we have with the county. So Wild Rivers Animal Rescue responsibilities under the current Animal Shelter Service Agreement, provide services, provide impound services to the county, house and feed of impounded dogs, provide veterinarian care and euthanasia if necessary, issuance of license, renewals, and fee collections. Is my understanding, when you look at the agreement in Section 2.5, it talks about dog control. In the agreement, it defines the responsibility of dog control services to the county. The section states if willing, Wild Rivers Animal Rescue employees wish to participate in the service, that the county sheriff may deputize that person. That did happen for a couple of years. There was a lady that was deputized in Brookings, and she did a very good job. She decided it was too much for her and decided to turn in her badge. Currently, we do not have the staff or the resources or the training to provide such services. It would probably kill our insurance, liability insurance as it is in dealing with that, and the training that's necessary, we just, we don't have it. So what kind of services do we provide to community currently that are not even outlined in the agreement? The agreement, we're supposed to handle impounded dogs, and that's pretty much where it's focused on, plus the licensing. Well, the shelter provides food, vet care for animals, dogs and cats, coming from situations such as hoarding, strays, surrenders, owner deceased, owner jailed or hospitalized. We have a dog currently at the shelter that's been there for weeks because their owner is hospitalized. Many of these animals require vet care during their stay until we can rehome them. Many of these situations, we do not cover the boarding or vet bills. We also provide low-cost wellness clinics, vaccination clinics, and spay and neuter clinics. Here's some examples. I talked about hoarding earlier this year, we had, or last year, we had 40 cats and kittens come in. Four of them were pregnant. One required a C-section. All required three courses of antibiotics and antivirals. Five had to be put to sleep, multiple vet visits, and the estimated cost to us was roughly $10,000. What I would like to point out and thank the community is that we had a tremendous impor funds from the community. We went out on Facebook and asked people to help us with those bills, and they really came forward and did it.
Question?
Sure.
Do you also get help from the veterinary professional community? Like involving, like, in other words, I know you said the value of that work was $10,000, but I mean, do they write any of it off or any of that kind of stuff?
Usually, they give us a discount.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Especially, and that also comes into effect during the low-cost spay and neutering and the wellness clinics and vaccination clinics.
Sorry to interrupt.
Example two, currently is an impounded dog. His name is Red. He has multiple tumors. Some were raw and bleeding, required veterinarian lab work and surgery. To date, his bill is $1,140. Currently, he's in long-term foster and hospice care. In fact, he's at my house. And he's a great dog, let me tell you. This is what Red looked like before the surgery. I don't have any before, but you can see the tumors that needed to come out. According to the vet that did the operation, you know, he's basically has terminal cancer, and eventually he will pass. So where does the shelter get its sources of income? A lot of people have asked that question. So far this year, we've collected $149,000. That's for seven months. 33% comes from fundraising, the other 20% from fundraising. 33% comes from fundraising, the other 20% from fundraising and donations, fundraising. Animal license account for about 9% for the seven months, and that will probably annualize up to around 15. Adoptions are 8%. We were able to get a PP loan that contributed some. Impounds are about 2%. We have a good recycling program that contributes, and then other income. And you can see the difference in the years. Interesting that physically, year 20 and 19 were basically the same amount of income. A little more, a little different distribution of how that income came in. Here's some relative financial information. Impound fees collected so far this year are $4,000 compared to last year, which was $2,900 versus $3,400 the prior year of that. License fees collected so far is $22,000. Remember, this is seven months. And $26,000 last year and $25,000 the prior year after that. The daily cost per kennel, this is what it costs us to actually keep a kennel open and available to anyone that, or any dog that needs to come in, is roughly $29.75. There's 24 kennels in the shelter, and our current operating expenses, you can see down there, for seven months is $151,000. Currently, the shelter is running at a loss of $1,500, which is not unusual for an animal shelter. The other thing, too, is I like to point out, is the net operating loss for our clinics. We've held 10 clinics so far since our fiscal year started, which is June to July. And, you know, we've lost about $2,200 in that. And what offsets that is the license fees. Part of the license fees that you allow us to keep go to stuff like this. So, you know, I was asked by Mr. Foreman to come up with some proposals as to how we can help you guys in your budgetary issues that you're facing and so forth, to come up with different ways that we can change the way that Wild Rivers Animal Rescue and the county works together in taking care of the cost of impounded dogs. I've come up with three proposals. One is that we will maintain three kennels 365 days a year at a rate of $15 per day, which is $16,423. I should point out that the average cost, the cost of operating the kennels, you know, prior to that was $23. Any additional kennels that might be needed, we would charge you $20 a day. All impound fees collected by us would remain with us. And the reason for that is that money we could be, could be used to help us maintain our ability to prepare and perform a wellness clinics, veterinarian visits, and so forth. The other proposal would be to allow, to extend to you four kennels at 365 days, at $15 a day, $21,900. The additional kennels would be at $20 a day. All impounded fees collected by us would be transferred to you. We feel that the additional roughly $5,000 would be enough to cover any offset to the wellness clinics and so forth. I keep coming back to the wellness clinics because it's a big drain on our budget. The third proposal is to charge the county on a per-dog basis at a rate of $20 per day until released by the county. I can't guarantee you any kennels based on this. All impound fees collected by us would be provided monthly to the county. Any questions on this?
I have a question.
Director Rickert?
So, like, the cost of $23 per kennel, does that, are you saying that that's the cost of just the kennel or for the food or whatever you provide to the dog?
Right, that's keeping the place open. That's our labor costs, labor, utilities, insurance, food.
Okay.
You know, everything.
And then does the county, those kennels that we currently use for the county, are they, are they usually full 365 days a year? Do we usually have, has the county dropped off animals that keep a full 365 days a year?
Sometimes you have more, sometimes you have less. My next slide will give you an example of that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Since December 1st, 2020 to February 11th, the shelter has incurred 251 dog days. During the same time period, we have collected $7,177 in license fees, where it comes out to about $29 per dog day. And again, funds received from the licenses are not only used to housing care for impounded dogs, but are used to offset costs of our wellness clinics, vaccination clinics. Also funds are use of the free food pantry. We have a lot of people that have pets that can't afford to feed them. They come to us and we offer them free food for their dogs and cats. And we also house cats and dogs that are not impounded. So that license fee goes a long ways. But the reason I pulled this is, there was a comment made a couple of days ago or a week ago, that the cost per dog was actually $130 a day. Based on this, you can see that it's not. And I know that changes, that could be different from one month to another. You know, the last couple of months, it's been really heavy. Other months, it's very light. But I can tell you, during this period of time, this is what we incurred, basically, as far as dog days.
What's that song, "Dog Day Afternoon"?
Yeah.
You're doing good.
Any questions?
We have about 15 minutes.
All right, I'm sorry. Additional changes requested by WRA, we like to basically get out the issuance of licenses and the handling of fees, collection of fees and so forth. We like to change the agreement to, upon mutually agreed-upon time, no longer than 30 days before, after we sign the agreement, for WRA to turn over the entire process of license applications, renewal notices, and related fees to the county. We will ensure that all new owners of adopted dogs are provided with a license application and the internet link to complete the application and provide the required fees to the county. So that's a major change. We would just like to get out of it, it's very time-consuming, a lot of headaches go along with it. These are some of the services that will remain available to the community. Nothing is gonna change as far as the community's concerned, it's just the agreement between us and the county. We will continue to offer dogs and cats for adoptions. We will continue to provide monthly and bimonthly low-cost vaccination wellness clinics and everything else. Those are the types of vaccines that we offer. Rabies can only be given if there's a veterinarian available. That's been a problem with the latest crisis that we're going through. We will also continue to provide bathing, nail cutting, boarding, and of course, the no-cost food pantry. None of the services that we currently offer the community will change or will ever change. In summary, Wild Rivers Animal Rescue serves the community, serves the community, will continue as in the past, is our goal to provide the community, regardless of the cost, best, the best and most efficient short and long-term dog care and cat care. We want to continue our relationship with the board, we've had it with the county. We feel that we've had a very good relationship with you, and we look forward to continuing that relationship. Finally, I would like to thank all of our donors, sponsors, volunteers, and employees that ensure each and all of the animals entrusted to our care are handled as if they were our own pets. Any questions?
Mr. Straussky, when you say surrender, that's abandoning animals. Do I have that right? Thank you.
And some of the, you know, some of the animals that come in from the code enforcer, you know, there is an impound fee that is supposed to be charged when the person picks up the fee, the dog. Several cases, that fee is not picked up. And we might have that dog for three, four, five, a week, even longer. And, you know, the person is in such a financial state that just can't afford it. We don't take the dog away from them, we just absorb the cost. Try to work with the community as much as we can.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker? Oh, you had?
No, no one else has told me that they were gonna speak, but there are many members here.
Great.
That may have some comments.
Yes, sir.
Hi, boss.
Howdy, how are you guys doing today? Everybody needs to get a little bit happy here, it's just kinda doom and gloom in here, and I'm one of those positive people that likes to shake things up. So I represent South Coast Humane Society. I came into this community just a couple of years ago, as you know, my better half sits on your board sometimes, and got into walking the dogs at South Coast Humane, got onto the board from there, and then decided that I needed to help bring a new culture to South Coast Humane by stepping off of the board, running the shelter. I did that for a year, and our shelter numbers, and if you will, let me just go back a little bit, 2019, we were roughly about 600 intake, and that was about a half of year with me at the helm. And 2020, our intake was 1,400. And this year, we are over 300 intake already, and that is due in part to our progressive way that we are working with animals. We're doing a ton of rescue in our community, and when I came into the shelter, I can actually remember the receptionist, she was the one that would do intake when, and I don't like to call it abandonment, because I call it surrendering an animal, because a lot of times people, they don't want to surrender their animal. They have to do it for financial reasons, health issues, vet bills, things that they can't take care of. So abandoning is you tie him down on the, down on the port and leave him there for somebody to figure it out. Anyway, I saw her go in, and she sat down and she talked to this dog, and these poor people had to give up this animal, and she said, you know, he's 10 and he's got these lumps and bumps, so we're not gonna be able to take him. And I thought to myself, wow, we're the humane society, not the selective society. So when did we start turning away people that need help? We are here in our community to help with low-cost spay and neuter, which we hold clinics multiple times a month. We also contract out now with a doctor in Klamath. She does it on an Indian reservation, and we transport public animals and our foster animals and our shelter animals in one swell-swoop down there, and I write checks for about $7,000 to $8,000 every time we go there. And we get 90 to 110 animals done in one day. So that is cutting our animal population here in Curry County a lot. In addition to that, our span, I'm sorry, our wellness, we hold now a two-day clinic, and we got appointments going non-stop, and we are pumping and trying to get more licenses for the county. Before I came into play, we really didn't work with the county. Y'all know where the, where the two fenced yards are down by Superfly? Brookings PD, if they got a stray, they'd just take them down there, drop them off at the kennel, then they'd call Wild River, Wild River would come down and get them. So there's a lot of manpower going on. When I came into play, started to communicate with the then-manager, Tanya, I'd help her out, go get an animal so it wouldn't have to sit there for two days if they couldn't have the staffing to get down there. We also take in strays, and we do it as a courtesy to our community. We try to get the animals back so that we don't tie up code enforcement, having to come down to us, bring it all the way to Wild Rivers. That's why we got into the animal licensing as well. We wanna help, wanna help educate the community on how important licenses are. It gets your animals back to you. We would love to be able to be part of the relationship with Curry County, with code enforcement. We would love to work very closely with animal services, and we would entertain providing animal services if the county would discuss that. Questions, comments that you have?
Just the number one hurdle that you have. I think you've already said it, but I just, for the public, I'd like to have you repeat that again, the number one issue you see that you have to deal with that...
I think the number one thing that I am seeing most, I get a lot of, a lot of animal complaints, a lot of lost dogs, and then also humane treatment of animals. We get complaints all the time about, you know, this person's got their dog tied up, they believe there's animal abuse. You know, we would, we would definitely get into maybe getting some training so that we can do some humane investigations on animal abuse. That would be something that would be very, very entertaining for us.
Mr. Pass?
Well, I know I've spoken with your husband, Brad.
Yes, sir.
Actually, I think we all have about possibly donating some land down in South County.
Yes, we, we have some big plans going on right now, we really do. Our shelter is humming along quite nicely, and we're actually looking to provide an off-site area for decompressing animals that have spent too much time in the shelter, which I will tell you this right now, my average stay in my shelter is under 17 days. So we, we are adopting, if I, I don't wanna mess up my numbers, I adopted to over 70 towns in Oregon, all the way up to Washington, Vancouver, inland to Idaho, Montana. I've had people come all over for our animals. But that site would also provide a public boarding area, which that is a big need here, is to have a boarding center for community animals. All the services that you saw that Wild River puts up there, including hospice for older animals, including, I'll give you just a quick example, I hate to take too much more of your time, but it's a story, I get a lady that comes in just a couple of days ago and says, I've gotta give this animal up to you, or her owner broke its back and she can't take care of it. And I said, okay, do you have the owner's information? She, yes, I do. I said, well, why can't she take it? Does she have next of kin, you know, do the investigation? And she said, well, her animal's aggressive. And I said, okay, well, let me go see the animal. So went outside, it's about a 10-year-old, nice girl. I said, you know what, I'm gonna do this as a courtesy to this woman, we'll bring her in. Come to find out, she's from Crescent City, okay, not even in our county. She came up, I've had a lovely conversation with the woman, I'm keeping the animal for her, 'cause it's the only thing that she's got and it's near and dear to her. That facility would house animals like that, low cost for people that cannot afford over-inflated prices. Yeah, that's, it's, I'm super excited about the potential to possibly work with the county and to provide some services on that side as well.
So, my, my further question to that was, I'm, I'm one of those people that was military-raised, so I like to, you know, have organization.
Absolutely.
And I don't like to get out of my lane, and I don't know a lot about shelters and how it all works, and, you know, I mean, I own a horse ranch and I know how that works, but I don't understand all of this with the enforcement and what that takes. So, you know, for us, in a workshop, for me anyway, I like to see how we can best serve the citizens of this community and these, you know, the shelters. So, I guess what I'm, what I'm gonna try and ask is if there's a way that we could, everyone in this room that took the time out of their schedules to be here, could get together and formulate, what would you like to see come from this workshop? You know, what is the direction you would like to see us as a board support that will make your jobs easier, protect the citizens and their, and their pets in the county, and work with code enforcement so that we all, all, you know, the engine's firing on all cylinders? And I think that's, for me, would be what I would like to see, is how you can formulate, all get together and formulate something that we can all work together with and, and we can push that through.
I'm more than willing and ready.
Was there anybody else wanting to speak? We got about five minutes.
I wasn't planning on speaking. My name is Jude Wickley, I run Happy Tails Pet Supply, which is in Port Orford. I'm originally from California, where I was a veterinary, licensed veterinary nurse for 24 years. When I moved up to Curry County in Port Orford, there was an extreme amount of problem with feral cats, no resources for feral cats. Since then, I started a rescue organization, and my rescue organization, as of next month, will be six years, and in that six years, we've done over 6,000 spays and neuters. I also offer a wellness... I also offer a wellness and low-cost vaccine clinic. I also provide low-cost spay and neuter options to the community. Um, the organization has spent almost three hundred thousand dollars in that six years, providing those services to this county, all privately funded, all privately collected, all done on a volunteer basis. I encounter a lot of hoarding situations. I've become by proxy animal control prior to there being no animal control, uh, for neglect issues, uh, abuse issues, hoarding issues. So I think you guys need to also take in consideration that not only these wonderful services that the county provides through these organizations, that there's also private entities that are doing it. I'm one person. I, as, I own the store, so that's sixty hours a week for the store, plus another anywhere from forty to sixty hours a week for the rescue organization. One of the greatest problems that we have here is the lack of true animal control services with implementation of laws that, that aren't even on the books, uh, for animals and their welfare. Animals are extremely important to people's wellbeing, uh, to their mental health. So a lot of people who have the mental illnesses or addiction illness, uh, uh, problems, animals are very important to helping them, keep them grounded, keeping them healthy, which is another very important services for what all these people do. So money is a very big issue. I'm not asking for any money. I would love for all the monies to go to the programs that are already established within the county. But I know it's not the forum to speak, but we also need to really start thinking about laws and implementation of laws. You guys might remember several years ago, there was a hoarding situation that was due to a, uh, someone who was being evicted. The sheriff was on, on the site, so was the police on the site, and they wouldn't even bother to look at the animals. They flat out told me, because I was called in, that they're private property and as long as the animals are off the property, they don't care. Well, we had to supersede everybody and we ended up getting seventeen felony neglect abuse counts that went through this court. Person was convicted. So that's just my input.
Thanks.
Well, thank you for coming from Port Orford and glad you spoke. Mr. Alcorn?
I'll speak real quick. Brad Alcorn speaking as a Curry County resident. From the outside looking in at this issue, um, it seems like it would make sense to take animal control away from code enforcement and create a separate entity with that through, um, one of the shelters. And then let Mr. Fortman focus on code enforcement. And I think that would probably be a pretty effective thing for him and the county. And if there is a way, a mechanism that everyone could agree on, that the shelter could become, um, a true, uh, animal control mechanism in which they could investigate, they could cite, they could, uh, enforce the rules and regulations of the state and the county, uh, and then house and, um, facilitate, uh, animal control. That would also be in the best interest of animals. And that's just a recommendation from a county resident from the outside looking in.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Brad. Yes, Mr. Pash?
I was just wondering, you know, we've all, we've all had our thoughts here and there may be some other thoughts. And I was, I would like to invite whoever would like to, to write down what you would like to see happen, exactly what you testified to here today. And, or, you know, maybe share your, your information that you had up there with us. And then, you know, we could get with code enforcement and sit down and, and, and figure out a way to, to get at this and get to work on it.
Yeah, collectively, as you recommended a minute ago, put it all together and, uh, don't be bashful. You can finish up. Thank you.
What you might say in an email, you maybe wouldn't say in a, in a private meeting. So like Commissioner Boy said, don't be bashful.
I did not know there were six thousand cats in Port Orford.
I do from Langley to Gold Beach. In fact, the shelter refers me out quite a bit.
Okay. Officer Fortman?
So what you can see from this meeting today is there's a lot of passion. Uh, I'm going to tell you that probably the most dangerous calls that we go on on routine and code enforcement are animal calls and not because the dog's trying to bite us either. We need partnerships. And when I talk about money, that, that there is a fund there. Wild Rivers and, and the county were really close to working out an agreement. But that money should be spent on programs through all this county to serve all of its citizens. A dog that's impounded in Brookings shouldn't have to go to Gold Beach. A dog is impounded and you get the idea. I would love to lose animal control. I would not be on call three sixty-five, twenty-four, seven. But I'm going to say, when I, like I said, when I was in college, I was an animal control officer. And there's a couple of models. There's models of some, the Humane Society getting certified people to do it, okay? Which is what Samhitaught County does. I'm all for that. There's models of what most counties do is have a county employee do this and have the shelter over here do that. The concern I, I have just being thirty-four years in law enforcement is, you know, and I take what you said, you had the training as, as great, is understanding the laws, understanding evidence, understanding collections, and being able to stand up in court and, and make it fair. I will say that, you know, both my deputy and I are, are threatened on a very regular basis. But again, I would love to be off call. I'd love to be off call. But I think that just to sum it up, we have some dedicated people here and there are more people that care out in the communities. Okay? What we need to do is just figure out, again, what, like I said to you this morning on another issue, what does the board want? How do we want to do this? Give the interpretation and do that. An example of that is something simple as the leash law in the state of Oregon. Leash law says your dog's supposed to be on a leash.
There's no such law.
Yes, there is.
There is not.
It has to be under control or restrained at all times.
This is going to be another workshop.
Nope. It's, it cannot run at large. And running at large is defined as not in control, in, not in the company of and under control of its keeper. There's no language that says a leash is required. It cannot run at large.
I stand corrected.
Thank you. It's ORS six oh nine point oh three five sub seven.
And why I stand corrected, I will point out that this county has never enforced the leash law. We have enforced the dog running at large law. Okay? So we're fundamentally on the same page.
Fundamentally good. I just want us to make sure we're not misstating the law. That's all my job is.
The point of what I was trying to say to the board, council, was when I came on board and interpretations of how to enforce the laws were given to me. And the, the at-large law was an interpretation along the lines of what Council Huddle said. And we loosely enforce that, give a lot of things. With the exception that there are designated leash, leash beaches, for example, parks. There are ordinances on that.
Sure. There is just no such thing as a statewide leash law. Just can't.
So guys, we're done.
People making misstatements of the law. I, that's the only, that's all I ask. That's all I ask.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So I can't thank, we can't thank you all enough for being here today. We've got a good direction. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, um, yeah, so I was just going to say that, you know, we've heard some good ideas about what, what to do with animal services and I'm, I look forward to hearing all of everybody's ideas that they write in. But with the idea of moving forward, working in South County possibly, and, and many of the other organizations, I, I would like to bring the Wild Rivers Animal Rescue Agreement back to a regular business meeting.
The two thousand twelve one?
The, yes.
Okay.
And, and amend it so that those, those license fees remain with the county for use as we work out agreements with, with other, with other organizations. If, if that is the board's will, then I, I will get that on the next agenda.
Good with me. Commissioner Herzog? Yeah, we're going to... Thank you all again very much. Excellent workshop. Uh, I want everybody back here at, uh, three ten. That only gives us a few minutes.
There's a shelter pet who wants to meet you. Meet one today. Visit theshelterpetproject.org. Adopt.
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the, the big, major issues affecting Oregon, and for that matter, all Western states. A real actionable response that's including how do we fight fire, actively managing our forest so that we don't have the fuels out there? And how are we going to protect communities from smoke exposures? The council is really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we as a board have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression. And recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties. Essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire. Prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County, and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources. And as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Merv George Jr. and I'm the forest supervisor for the Rogue River Siski Nation National Forest. The first thing is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm going to focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton. I'm the fire chief of Jackson County Fire District Three in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, uh, incredibly concerning to us in the, in the fire community, those in our, uh, communities in general, uh, our, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned as they ought to be. And really the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. Uh, it's, it's really an inspiring, um, showing of, of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our, of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue. It's bearing down on us. Fire season is approaching and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires, specifically from being burnt down. That's, that's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. Um, we're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning.
We're back. Welcome all. Item three B on our workshop. My asked to consider cost-free and voluntary program for my nutrition nurses. I was reading funny, but thank you. Welcome, Carrie, Sherry, and Misty. Welcome back. You did a wonderful presentation a couple of months ago and you've asked or offered our employees something to take a serious look at here. I'm just excited to have you at our workshop and, uh, listen to your presentation. Welcome again.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Well, I'll do a quick introduction of myself and a longer introduction of Nurse Sherry. And then Sherry will kind of go through the program, what it is and what we hope to achieve on behalf of all of the folks that are in the room today and all of the folks that serve Curry County on a regular basis. I'm Misty Young. I've been a certified, internationally certified coach, uh, since two thousand thirteen. I have a certificate from E. Cornell's, uh, Nutrition Center for Nutrition Sciences and also from the Health Sciences Academy as a coach. And I by chance hooked up with and met Nurse Sherry Carrie Baum. Sherry is, uh, a registered nurse. She holds a Master of Science in Nursing and she is a, the most recent deployment of the American College of Lifestyle Medicine. And she is just a few days away of receiving a international certification as a whole food plant-based chef. Uh, so she knows her stuff when it comes to food. She also holds the certificate from E. Cornell's Center for Nutrition Studies. And, uh, we promise to keep our workshop short and sweet. Our goal today is just to give you some information about a program that we've created, a, a full service coaching program. It's a multimedia coaching program. We're doing this at home because this is our home. We're both from Brookings. We both love this place. We love the people that serve us all here. And we believe we have something here that can frankly help the budget for health insurance, propose, uh, for health insurance premiums. So with that, I will turn it over to Nurse Sherry.
Well, the whole point of us coming and wanting to discuss it is because we're really trying to address the issue in our country that 70% of the population is either obese or overweight right now. And we know that everybody over 55, according to the CDC, 70% of those people over 55 have one, minimum one chronic disease. So we've developed a program to kind of help people to understand that they really do have a choice in how they want their healthcare done, how they want to take care of their health. This is a program that basically teaches people the lifestyle, including what to eat to encourage good health, which we are proponents of a whole food plant-based diet, but that's not a must to be part of this program. This program is to help people learn to eat more and more fruits, vegetables, healthier food, healthier grains, decrease the processed food, and really support their health. And lifestyle doesn't just include food, so our program also talks about meditation, relaxation, exercise, good sleep habits.
Hydration.
Definitely.
Mental attitude.
So mainly we want to offer it to Curry County employees. It's a great program, has three books. Oh gosh, how many lessons? I think 30 lessons.
Yeah, there's, there's six modules. It's a modular program. And we don't want to give you guys the whole entire big picture, you know, there's no sales pitch here.
No sales pitch.
What there is, is an incredibly robust, science, evidence-based nutrition program that has 36 lessons in it, that talks about everything that Sherry just said. The evidence for healthy nutrition, the evidence for mindset, for attitude, for rest and restoration, for activity, you know, the importance. Like, we know that people should exercise at least an hour a day. Most folks don't have that kind of time and most folks think, oh, well, you have to do it for an hour at a time, but you don't. You can do it in 10-minute bursts, you can do it in 20-minute bursts. And in fact, a lot of medical professionals recommend, oh, well, maybe you should only do it in 30 minutes altogether because they don't think people will do what we're asking them to do. So can I just talk about DASH for a second? We didn't talk about this at all.
We didn't.
There is a program called DASH. It's the Dietary Approaches to Stop Hypertension, DASH.
Very common.
It's very common. It's well-known. And when DASH first came out, the gentleman that created it, the doctor that created it, said, "We think people should do these things." Very specific, right? Don't eat salt, exercise an hour a day. And when it came out and they made the recommendations, they came short of the recommendations because they said, "People aren't going to do that." So let's give them a lesser standard to, to step up to. And the same is true for exercise, right? We know it should be an hour a day, but people are recommending a half hour a day because they think that's what people are willing to do.
And when you consider that about 90% of all diseases in our society are due to lifestyle. Heart disease, CDC states 650,000 people a year are dying from heart disease. And we're not up in arms about that. And I don't want to belittle COVID. It, it's a very serious disease and we're looking at, I think as a nation, about 550,000 people are dying from COVID. But we're not talking about heart disease and how do we prevent it? And if 90% of diseases are due to lifestyle, let's prevent it.
That's a silent pandemic.
Absolutely.
It is.
So our whole program is here to help people accomplish the health, to get the life they need. Not hard. We're offering it free just because we care about our, our county and our community. And we want people to really have the science behind this and understand what it's all about.
We know that, uh, the program really starts with a healthy weight. So we talk about steps to a healthier you. And the first one is always to re, to release just some weight. Even a 5% weight reduction can make a big difference in your numbers. And we talk a lot about, in the program, about knowing your numbers, whether that's your BMI, your body mass index, or your, your weight, or your blood pressure, your cholesterol, your A1C, right, your sugars. Knowing your numbers helps you to find a target and a goal to shoot for. So when we talk about weight loss, that's something pretty much everybody can feel a little bit like, whether it's five pounds or 50 pounds, they can, they can understand that. Yes.
BMI, I thought that was Big Mac intake.
That is fun, Commissioner.
Yeah, body mass index.
In our culture, it just might be.
In our culture, it is, yeah.
But really, it's just a program to, to support the health. So what we wanted to do was offer it. It's a coaching program. It's not a medical program. We really recommend and we ask that people work with their doctors on this because we know that when you follow the program, depending on what your desire is, you can do it a little bit or you can do it a lot and jump in. Weight's going to change. Needs for medications are going to change. So we really recommend that people work with their doctors so that they make sure that if the change happens rapidly, they're getting the medication and the levels that they need.
I love it. I'm, I'm so glad that you brought that up because it is important to us to say that we aren't, you know, I'm not a nurse. Sherry is a nurse and she is a diploma of the American College of Lifestyle Medicine, but she is not practicing medicine. We are here as health coaches and to help people make appropriate decisions that can help them in their own health. Whatever their goal is and whatever their why is, it's going to be different for each person. Do you want to talk a little bit about labels, about misinformation, about any of that stuff?
Not really.
Not really? That's kind of gets into the program, yeah.
Part of the program really discusses how to read a label, how to know what you're purchasing so that you're buying food not because of the label, but because of the ingredients. So, you know, we don't have to go into that with you guys. We just want you to consider offering it to the county employees.
And we're offering it at no fee, again, because this is our home, this is our place, this is where we live. I'm going to just rip through to, if I can get on that. You know, there's label information in there. We're going to help people reduce and prevent and reverse disease. It sounds crazy, but that's all doable with a whole food plant-based approach.
As Misty said, it's very science-based. It's not our opinion. And when you get into the program, you'll see the books. And I think the first book of why making these choices, there's like three or four pages of references. So we really went out of our way to make sure everything is science-based. This isn't a funny diet. This isn't a, anything other than, this is what we're talking about, how to accomplish your health goals.
I love it. So we tell, uh, folks how, you know, what they can eat, how they can eat it, how they can prepare it. We share that with them and we ask them, we would be asking the county employees to come on board and ask themselves this question. What's my why? Why do I care? Why do I want to do this? Well, is it because I want to lose weight and feel great? Maybe, maybe that's your why. Or maybe you want to be able to jump down on the floor and play with your grandkids. Maybe you need more stamina. Maybe you need more energy. Maybe your memory is suffering. All of those things can be approached with a whole food plant-based diet and lifestyle. And when you know your why power, then you don't have to worry about willpower. Because what is driving you inside becomes the thing that drives your outside and your activities. We're not going to go into all the details here, but again, again, imagine if you, if you see the light bulb there, you know, it's full of foods that are highly inflammatory and addictive. And as this woman begins to change her thinking and eating more foods that are supportive of health, you can see that her weight is changing. We would love to see that for the folks in the county as well.
And we have been getting great results with it.
It is exciting to see the results.
Between the weight loss and cholesterol levels. So we've had quite a few clients that really, truly are sharing what their accomplishments have been, and it is working.
Could you tell one story? Could you tell the story, yeah, the guy who had the marker on his leg?
Oh, there was a gentleman that, um, was a diabetic. And he, he didn't actually know he was a diabetic. He had a sore on his foot. He honestly, um, ended up going to the hospital because he couldn't get this wound to heal. And as you know, with diabetes, there's less perfusion, more sugar in your bloodstream, so you're more likely to get an infection that grows. And at the hospital, they'd actually drawn a line around his calf as to where they were intending on amputating. And he, he actually went home, didn't have to deal with the amputation. He changed his diet, stopped his sugar, really stopped the food that was causing inflammation, and he was able to save his foot.
I love it. That's a good story. And a couple of other stories that are helpful too. People that begin to eat whole food plant-based, changing what they're eating and what they're putting into their bodies. They see their, their need for oral and injectable diabetic medication change really rapidly to the point where it's within a couple of days, they have to begin talking to their healthcare provider to say, "Help me make some changes here." And then there's the weight loss, which is fun.
Which is really exciting when we get our clients calling us and going, "Ooh, I'm down 18 pounds."
Yeah, it's fun. It's neat.
Sign me up.
Exactly. It's free. So how do you sign up? And this is, the, the big crux of why we're here today is to give you the basic, basic information on how to go there yourself, get the information for yourself, and to share it with all the folks in the county. It's easy. You go to mynutritionnurse.com. That's the first step. Scroll to the very bottom. You'll find a link there that says Curry County Scholarship. That's it. That's all you do.
We aren't canvassing information. We do nothing. We do have weekly coaching so that people can call or not actually call.
And they jump onto a coaching session with us.
And just talk to us, ask us questions, ask about food, ask about, um, pretty much anything.
It's a wide-ranging discussion. It usually begins with Nurse Sherry making a short presentation on some topic of interest to folks in whole food plant-based community. And it's a lifestyle education program.
It really is. We, we touch on everything. So weekly, we have the coaching, but we, we will not do anything with the information that people send us. We do send out the notification of the coaching and I do try to do a newsletter. Just like last week, it was, "What's so important about your gut?"
Microbiome, yeah.
Understanding the theory behind the microbiome in the gut, um, the week before, or the month before that. I can't even remember.
Off the top of your head, yeah, I know.
But every month, I try to send out a two-page newsletter. Um, and that's it.
It's pretty straightforward. And the one thing we would encourage the folks from Curry County to do is to use their personal email address because this is, while we're bringing it to them as part of their employment within the county, we're suggesting they use their personal email just so there's no, they don't feel weird about it. You guys don't have to worry about them using public resources to access the program. And heck, it's, you know, there's HIPAA stuff, right? You start talking about people's health insurance and privacy and protection and that kind of thing. So that's it. They literally go to that link that I said at mynutritionnurse.com, scroll to the bottom, Curry County, log in. They give us their first name, their last name, their email address, and they're in. That's it. They get right into the program. And then we're there to serve them, answer questions, educate them, and help them live a healthier lifestyle, all to the benefit of all of us, Curry County residents. So that's it.
It is true.
It is true, yeah. So, any questions?
I'd just like to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Oh, that's so nice.
My, I have my oldest sister and she's much older than I am. She's, she has her master's in nursing as well.
Nice.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. And that's where it comes from because people look at us like, "What, you're going to give away this free program?" And they look at us like, "Why?" Well, my whole life has been trying to help people, heal people. And I'm, I'm a tiny bit disillusioned by medicine. I want people to come up with a choice that fixes the long-term problem, not that one pill that fixes maybe your numbers, maybe your cholesterol, but there's so many other things involved. So thank you.
For me, I've had a life-changing thing because of some of the things I had to go through. I put on 50 pounds in seven months that I've never taken off. Hormones and...
Right.
You'll, yeah, well, I wanted to talk about it here, but you'll, you, I'll talk to you about it sometime. But, um, a lot of our, you know, a lot of people don't realize how fast your body changes when you start to lose weight. I know several people who spoke with diabetes that are completely off diabetes medicine now because they've lost, you know, 20% or 25% of their life. It's amazing how fast your body starts to get back to normal.
Yes.
You know, and, and we're not huge fans of the keto diet, and that's because of the research. There's not enough research that backs it up, and unfortunately, it's pretty tough on your kidneys and it's pretty tough on inflammation. Where you may lose weight on the keto diet, but unfortunately, it's harmful in other aspects.
Yeah, long-term.
So it, it, we're excited to get to share it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Herzog?
Anybody else? Yeah.
Is it, um, more vegan than?
It is, but again, it's all vegan.
I'm not, I'm in the wrong business on my end.
But, but what we like to say is people don't have to jump in and be 100%. We don't expect perfection out of anybody, but reducing it, making it a treat or making a decision. Because if you think about it, in America, we're eating animal products at least four times a day, right? And you look at me like, hmm, well, breakfast, lunch, dinner, cheese.
Right, cheese, eggs, meat.
Right, snacks. You know, I was a huge proponent of those string cheese. You know, that was my great snack, string cheese and boiled eggs. But we know that that increases your cholesterol, it increases your weight, it increases even abnormal blood sugars. They're finding the research that animal protein really impacts our blood sugars. So, but we're not here to say that you have to be perfect. We're, I am not a vegan. I am a whole food plant-based, um, diehard. And I'd love it if you would share it with your sister. That would be great to have her review it too. But we're really proud of it. We're actually going to publish the, the book is going to be on Amazon, probably within a week or two.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And not only are the employees invited, but family members are invited too. So we want this to be something that you can take into your household and share with your family, the people that you love. Because what we've realized is that once you get your family on board, everybody's on the same train. You get some momentum going, you start seeing the results.
It's exciting.
It is exciting. I know. I, I literally have goosebumps from head to toe right now. It's, it is.
Families get exciting. And all of the information can be downloaded to their own computer at home. So they can, like, we've had clients that have printed everything at home, put it in a binder so that they have it. So anyway.
All right.
We hope you guys will consider it. And we brought our business card so that you can, um, look at the information yourselves.
Okay.
One quick question?
Sure.
Maybe two?
Sure.
First of all, just a comment. You both have been incredibly patient and so community-minded and, um, just tolerant of our schedules and the two times you've been here.
No problem.
Really been a great breath of fresh air. You know, you mentioned the COVID pandemic, you mentioned heart disease. I know that one of your books probably, and questionably is going to cover the immune system.
Yes.
That is, that's something my, one of my grandfathers taught me years ago, is trying to understand what you put in and, you know, part of just building up that. And boy, if, you know, connecting that now with where we are, the pandemic, it's really opened my eyes an awful lot. And so I'll be anxious to learn about that. My wife and I sometimes have conversations on enough water, too much water. And I just had a friend send me something last night, basically have water prior to a stroke or a heart attack. The timing of that, when you eat your meals, how important that is. And, uh, and right off the bat, you mentioned dehydration, and that's something on the river a lot. I have really had to watch my customers because they're, they're on a river and they are just hot. And they don't know they're getting dehydrated and what the consequences can be. So I'm very interested in that. I'm sure that's in your book. Whole Foods Plant-Based Chef?
Right.
I have 95% done. I have 5% more of the program to do, but I have learned so much and it's been a great program. But we just want to say, as Americans, we got to stop mortgaging our health. We're doing it every single meal. Everything we're eating is really mortgaging our health. And people think that it doesn't matter when you're young, but we're seeing more and more people in the age of 30 on blood pressure medication, cholesterol medication, because they've got a lifetime of eating that way. So we just appreciate you guys having us back again.
Thank you.
One more question. Where do you stand on coffee?
Love it.
As much as possible.
What are you putting in it?
You guys will come up with a diet, whoever comes up with a diet that allows you to access all the water and all the ranch dressing you want, I'll follow it.
How about if I come up with a recipe that is similar? Like, I have a great recipe for mayo. I love mayo, but it's all plant-based, so no oil in it.
We could probably make you a ranch dressing that would blow your mind.
We'll work on it.
We'll work on that, yeah.
Come back, come back, come back again. Is G or D?
The secrets for the employees one more time. Could I also ask for an email and we'll mass send that out for people?
Sure.
And remind them on a personal email and just the option they have if they're interested and maybe a little encouragement.
Sure. Sure.
So, um, sorry, where I came from, we had what was called a wellness program, and vendors such as, uh, these two speakers here, others, would come in, and our governing body created a plan that said, if the employees accomplish, you know, ten of these fifteen goals, um, they will get two hundred dollars. And the reason is, and I know you talked about doing stuff on personal email, and you sending stuff out to everyone, but the idea was, if the employees are healthier, they're gonna lose less time at work, and so there is a work-related feature to it. And the, so that was the idea behind it, that was at the city of Medford, but these things exist at organizations to promote health and wellness among their employees for the benefit of the organization, as well as that of the employee. Um, so it's not just a personal issue, it's, it can be organizational.
Yeah, sure.
That's a good... It's a public health issue.
Absolutely.
You might wanna include that in your email.
Okay.
I'll run it by council, and then we'll make sure it's okay to send it to everybody, and just a reminder and encouragement, and, and, uh, yeah, here's to, here's to Y-power versus willpower.
Nice. Awesome.
There's also a cookbook in the...
That's right, there's cookbook, so you don't find out about that ranch dressing.
There is the mayo in that one, but not that one.
Thank you so much.
One more time, your, your sequence there.
The sequence is, you go to mynutritionnurse.com, and you scroll to the very bottom of the page, and you'll find a green button there that says Curry County Scholarship, and it's that easy. You click it, it brings up a welcome page, and then you just enter your first name, last name, and email, and you're in the program that fast.
And a scholarship again is?
A scholarship into the My Nutrition Nurse Academy. It's completely free. That coaching program includes all of the science, the references, the videos, the books, the cookbook, the coaching, everything's in there, it's a hundred percent free.
That is absolutely incredible.
Yay!
Yay.
Do you have our cards?
I do have cards, yeah.
The email's on our cards, too. Well, thank you guys for your patience.
So I'm not gonna have prime rib tonight.
Please, yeah, yeah, have the baked potato.
I love that you said, you don't have to be perfect.
You don't.
Yeah.
Nobody has to be perfect, but you're gonna get better results the more you follow it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Way to go.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have fun meeting.
Hey.
I really enjoyed the last...
Yeah.
Do I need to, um, do I need to drag that to the trash to pull out?
You just close it.
I just close that?
Yep.
And then I close that? Yeah, I have a little sticky poo.
Ah!
Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, see you later.
See you later.
Commissioner Liaison, Department Managers Discussion, Responsibilities, Duties, and Clarification. So we've had some, we've had some, you brought it up, what, last meeting? You could go first or I can.
No, that's fine, go ahead.
Um, you know, there's been some issues where commissioners, oop, how did my mic get off? Thanks, Eric. You're supposed to remind me. Um, there's just been a lot of discussion on, uh, what commissioner's responsibility is, you know, do they stay in their lanes, uh, what authority do they have, uh, do we even need liaisons? Uh, it comes back to the Director of Operations, that position. Um, I think the reason you brought it up, Commissioner Pash, is because, um, you know, we've replaced commissioners in the middle of the, the term, uh, because department heads said, I, I'd rather have him or her, uh, and so that's, uh, that's an important issue, and it's gaining a little bit of intensity, and, um, I just want the board to, um, take a look at that, and, you know, I heard, here's, here's one example, I heard Classop County, uh, or I heard a reference to Classop County back in early January, and I know the commissioners there, at least one very well, and, uh, you know, they've had, uh, their, their commissioners are volunteer, uh, with a stipend, they have five, and between, uh, two thousand, let's see, they had nine county administrators in twelve years, um, and, uh, they have changed their system since then a little bit. Um, so we know, um, you know, if, if, if we don't need commissioners to fulfill their, their obligations and responsibilities as the voters and citizens have intended, then why do we need commissioners? I mean, I've had that asked me. Um, and so what is the reason you brought it up a month ago?
Well, a lot of the reason I brought it up was just, um, what I, you know, a lot of what I feel our duties are, I, I must say, as you know, when I ran for office, I, uh, I was against the stipend and having, uh, an administrator. We went to what I call, what we, what we came to call a Director of Operations position, and I believe there's a big difference in that, in that our Director of Operations does no hiring, he does no firing, he does no salary, you know, those kind of things are all raises, and all that, all comes through the board. Where an administrator, the, the board really doesn't say much, they, they're brought policies, they look and read the policies and make a decision if they think they should go forward with those policies or not. So for me, it was more, um, I guess, micromanaging or going too far with our positions. Uh, I, I enjoy Richard Christensen, and I have gone out with him several times on different projects that he'd worked, and I was like, you know, Commissioner, this is what I'm gonna be bringing to the board in a few weeks, and, you know, I need this culvert here, I need this road widened here, and this is how we're gonna do it, and this is why we're gonna do it, and, you know, so he gives us that, gives me that information, and then when he comes and presents to the board, I can say, yes, I was there, you know, I, I participated, and I understand what he's talking about. And that's what I think personally a liaison is. It's a conduit between, uh, department, or, you know, whoever, whoever we're assigned to, a, and the board, and that's, that's what our job is, to, to tell that, Mr. Christensen, you can't do that, or you shouldn't do that, or it's not, that, that was what I don't feel is my job. So I just thought it was, you know, maybe we should have a conversation about that part of it, as well as, um, as commissioners, I, I just want this board to fully know, you know, I am one hundred percent, that we are full-time doing our jobs. I, I don't think, uh, a stipend job is, is anything this county is looking for or would vote for. They, actually, they voted against it twice. So, you know, what I like to possibly see, uh, a way to find a five-member board versus a three-member board down the road, I would probably like to see that greatly, because it's, it's more minds putting together, but it's also more opinion and, and more discussion on things, um, that are important. Uh, the way to fund that in, in our county right now is probably a long way away, but, uh, I just, for me, I just feel that as, as liaisons, I, I just don't, I don't wanna take it too far. Um, and that's why I feel it's Director of Operations, we have employees that go to their, 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 uh, department head, and they'll get satisfaction, they've got somebody else to go to, you know, and then, and then Mr. Rickert is over their department head, so he can, he can then call that department head and say, okay, we're having an, an issue with this employee that you already know about, and let's discuss that, and then they all get together, and as a last, you know, case, then the liaison gets involved and they bring it to the board. Um, but I don't feel, and, and again, I'm, I'm not trying to go backwards here, I just, I don't feel that we need to, to over-micromanage our, our department heads. I think we are the, to liaise between the department heads and to have that relationship with the Director of Operations. So that was basically what I wanted to talk about with it.
So historically, do you have something?
Uh, need a little bit.
So historically, uh, where'd the micromanaging, managing, uh, accusations or notion come from? Because I, I, I just, uh, I'm at an absolute loss there. I was replaced as, uh, Commissioner Liaison by two different departments within sixty days, and, um, it was, uh, it came from our Director of Operations, uh, saying basically, uh, you know, you're out of your lane, they're, I'm their direct supervisor, you basically don't have anything to say. Now, I can give you plenty of evidence on that, and what the consequences were, um, and what the, even the, the damages were, and so that didn't come from micromanaging. So I don't know, you know, like, you mentioned, uh, Roadmaster Christensen, I think that's a great example. Um, that relationship you have with him is what the commissioners have been doing for a long, long time. Uh, but where the breakdown was, is something that we haven't taken the time to really review and get the, get the facts, and, uh, then consequently, uh, department heads can hide behind the Director of Operations, and, uh, the commissioners become irrelevant. And there again, I can give you plenty of evidence on that. So that's why I asked the question, where are we, and, uh, why would we need commissioners? And why, you know, often, um, you know, you, the, the example I just gave you from Classop County, um, those administrators oftentimes use, even city administrators sometimes use those positions to move up, and, uh, you spend a lot of money training, a lot of time, and then the next thing you know, uh, you're, you're back and avoided the system. So, um, the old school worked really well in Curry County, uh, the, uh, commissioners took a very direct role in the responsibility. I mean, I, I don't have a record in my forty years of business of, of not having good relationships and not being able to work with people, to the contrary. Um, but I have two cases in this, in this program where, uh, I was pretty much powerless because of the previous board saying, we're not gonna listen to you, we're not gonna search the facts, uh, this is, this is, uh, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna replace you. And so, um, that, that was, that was a detriment to the, to the county, and unfortunate, and counterproductive, and so, uh, here we are. I think the, uh, uh, the Commissioner Liaison have to be able to build relationships and take that ultimate responsibility, uh, coordinate, communicate, um, and be there. Uh, we have a Director of Operations right now that I think is quite overloaded, and, uh, I gave the rundown of, uh, our finance department and the amount of funds that are going out. Um, and it's, uh, you, you said, Commissioner Pash, you feel like it's playing catch-up from four years of, um, bad management, and, uh, that is, uh, that is quite the yellow blinking light to me. So, um, I, I want to be in a position where I'm responsible to build relationships with department heads, and even elected officials, to the extent that I might be needed, or, and I can report back to the board. Um, and I think we're all on the same page with that, uh, but I don't wanna go between, uh, because, uh, that person, that director, then ends up, uh, not in my office or your office, and, uh, uh, we, we don't have a good management structure that is gonna be the best in the long run. You're next.
Well, I, I would just like to offer my two cents here. So I, I, I'd like to go back to the board, you know, the commissioners run and have, and are over department heads. I think what I've heard today with open gov and, and Brad's responsibilities are overwhelming with, uh, that in the finance department alone. And then Chris, to your point, you know, you and, you and, uh, Rich have a great relationship. I see that as an opportunity for you to be his, you know, he's, you are his go-to guy, where Brad doesn't have that opportunity to go ride around with Rich. He is, is, you know, he's got plenty to do with finance and Director of Operations, and whether we change that title or whatever, I want, I, I signed on to be a working commissioner with people underneath me, and, and I can, I, we all three know how to manage people and have done that in our past, and to, to have, to have that on one person, and then we're, we're up here, it, it just doesn't, it, it doesn't seem to me like it's worked, and, and I would like to see, you know, try this other way, the, you know, like the old days when the working commissioner had people that answered to him. Um, and I think it would be a load off of Brad, I think it would be, um, I'd like to see it, I'd like to try it. I'd like to go back to that, I think it was, it was a way that was, the county was running at one time, and, um, I, I don't see the, the way it's been working right now that as a, um, a benefit to the county, so I don't know how that, excuse me, I'm just, I don't know how that, how we do that, but that's, that's my vision, and, uh, um, you know, I, I got a couple, I'm a liaison to, to chat and to Anthony, and I've, you know, ridden with him, and I, I don't see any reason why I can't manage these folks, you know? So...
Mr. Pash?
Well, I just, again, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna go backwards here, so, uh, well, my, my point is this, I'm not saying that we shouldn't liaise like what I do with Rich and, and others. What I'm, what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, where do we draw the line? Because it's not our job to tell them what to do. It's not our job to say, you should do this or you shouldn't do that. I don't believe that's a commissioner's job. I think we have department managers that run their departments. If this board as a board feels as though they're not doing that properly, then we make that change. If we don't feel as, or, or if they have something that they wanna bring, yeah, they talk to their liaison about it, but the liaison is only one board, uh, one commissioner, where if it's Brad, uh, you know, he, he, he then brings that to the board, and we all get to vote on it. Where I think if it's one commissioner, I think that person is almost intimidated, it could be intimidated to say, well, what, whatever Chris says, I better do, because, you know, he may only be my liaison, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm worried for things. Um, where if it comes through Brad, it's, it's more of a generic way of doing it. So again, I, I am fully on board for, you know, having those relationships with everyone, um, you know, having good friendships even with, with our employees. But where do we draw the line as to what our, our duties are, and where, what we should be doing, saying yes or no to, and what we shouldn't be saying yes or no to? And I think there's a fine line there.
There's still.
Counsel.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just offer one thing here, go ahead, counsel, that's fine. I'm sorry.
Don't, don't lose your thought.
Yeah.
Write it down.
That could happen. We're not in disagreement on, we don't tell people how to do their job. I don't want the sheriff or anybody else telling me how to do my job. I don't tell any of the other elected officials or departments how to do their job. But there is a higher, there is a structure here that is the final say before going to the board, and that's production. That is a safety valve, that is heading off a problem before it starts, and that's the way it was done here for years. The voter said, we want responsible, accountable commissioners. You can't put us in a liability position and then say, you have no authority. And that's, that's how I somewhat at least interpret this. And so we don't have a disagreement, again, on how we manage our jobs, how we conduct ourselves around department heads, the public, county council, anyone. We build those relationships. We can't have a, a middle person getting in the way of that, because it has not worked. The hard feelings that have come from the last two Director of Operations, county administrator has been unbelievably expensive, and the consequences for this county have been, I mean, lawsuits, investigations, censors, all the rest of it. So, uh, let me do our job and then deal with it, let him do his job, you do your job. There's a notion the public has out there, you have a director, the commissioners have a Director of Operations, 'cause he or she does their work. Counsel Huddle?
Thanks. Um, so maybe you guys have seen these, maybe you haven't. Um, in two thousand one, uh, January twenty-second, there's Order eleven zero one six, and this was, um, back before we had a Director of Operations. It's pretty short and sweet, uh, it was a matter of order regarding supervision and discipline of certain county employees. And it said, the county has a number of employees who are not under authority of a department head or elected official, other than the Board of Commissioners. And this could be, for instance, box office staff or somebody like that. Um, and then it says, it's expedient that these employees be supervised and, when appropriate, disciplined, uh, by a designated public official, and the Board of Commissioners has assigned... And the Board of Commissioners has assigned liaison commissioners for each county department to further county business. And it just said now therefore it's ordered that effective immediately, county employees who are not under authority of a department head or elected official, other than the Board of Commissioners, shall be supervised and when appropriate, disciplined by liaison commissioner of the department or his designee. So that would allow the liaison commissioner to supervise and discipline the employees who are, who do not report to a department head. And then it says nothing would be construed to apply the supervision and discipline of department heads themselves. So that was 2001. Then we moved to 2004, March of 2004. And this is in the matter of order delegating authority to liaison commissioners to reprimand department heads in appropriate cases. And it says Curry County has a longstanding system of assigning liaison commissioners to individual county departments. And it says the liaison commissioners are generally the most informed commissioners on the occurrences and status of the departments they are assigned to. And from time to time, it may be necessary to reprimand a department head for performance-related issues, inappropriate conduct, et cetera. And it says whereas it can be awkward and inefficient to require the full meeting of the Board of Commissioners and open meeting to direct issuance of a reprimand for a department head. So then it just said liaison commissioners are delegated authority to issue oral and written reprimands in appropriate circumstances to department heads whom they are assigned under the following terms and conditions. Reprimands shall only be issued following consultation with county legal counsel. When a liaison commissioner intends to issue a written reprimand, he or she shall first prepare a draft and send to the other commissioners and county legal counsel. Any commissioner can send a written request to the liaison commissioner and payroll and personnel coordinator to place the matter before the full board within seven days after receipt of the draft written reprimand letter. If such a request is sent, it'll be decided by the full board. The board shall convene an executive session, goes on and on. And then it says if there's nothing, that if the board doesn't respond to the draft written reprimand, the liaison commissioner can issue it. And then it says a department head can appeal a reprimand from a liaison commissioner to the full board, et cetera. And then it is not construed to other forms of discipline, including termination. So it's only about verbal and written reprimands. And then that was March 2004. So we had 2001, 2004, and then 2006. And it said the order of 2004 did not address the situation where two commissioners, other than the liaison commissioner, may wish to initiate proceedings to reprimand a department head. And then they just decided a, majority of commissioners can implement a reprimand procedure. So these are still on the books. We went to a administrator ordinance and the administrator ordinance repealed. And that, that gave great powers to the administrator to hire, fire, supervise all department heads. And it repealed all orders and resolutions that were in conflict with that. But then the board repealed that. And so we don't have that prohibition anymore. And then we adopted simply a job description for a Director of Operations, which I don't believe repealed any of these liaison commissioner authorities. So, but Commissioner Boyce, it goes to your question of, you know, who assigns the liaison commissioners? And I know it's the Board of Commissioners by consensus says who the liaisons are going to be. But the liaisons may have power to do reprimands co-equal to, if we, if that power exists with a Director of Operations. So, you know, you, if you're liaison of a, of a department, you have supervisory and disciplinary authority over the department heads you liaise. So that's, those are on the books. They're, they're there. It's just something to think about. And that, that could exist again. Co, it could be co-incidental or, you know, at the same time as whatever authority the Director of Operations has.
Mr. Pash?
So counsel, a legal, I guess I'm going to ask you for kind of a legal conclusion then. Mr. Christensen wants to show me a culvert he wants to put in. Okay, I go out and ride with him. He shows me the culvert and I say, "No, I don't think you should do that." Does he still put the culvert in?
It's up to him.
And if he does, I can reprimand him from doing that?
If you consider that to be, you know, whatever it is in that purview we just read about reprimands. And then if he wants to appeal that, he can come to these people. And so, and Commissioner Pash and Commissioner Boyce and Commissioner Herzog, it may have the same result. So, right? So let's, let's, let's use a hypothetical. Let's say we have Commissioner A and Commissioner A is a liaison of a department. And Commissioner A says, "Hey, department, you better do this or I'm going to reprimand you." And they say, "Too bad. Go ahead. Reprimand me." And they get reprimanded. Then they appeal that to their other commissioners. The other commissioners could say, "You know what? This wasn't right and you're not going to be that person's liaison anymore." So we could still have the scenario where a dissatisfied department head who does not agree with the conduct or the decisions of their liaison commissioner can come back to the full board and everything gets rejiggered. So having liaison commissioner powers doesn't necessarily mean that you are always going to be a liaison commissioner for any particular thing. And if the department head you're liaising and supervising and disciplining has issues with it, they will bring it to the full board very likely and there will be some decision by the full board. So everything you all do is, has some, there's some path to get to the full board to regulate, oversee, or review the relation between a liaison commissioner and the department they liaise. So really, it's, it's very relational, I think. And it, so I.
Very relational. Say that again.
It's just very relational. So anyway, that's, but that's the history of what we had. And I believe there's an argument that those things that we used to have that were repealed by ordinance that then got repealed are resuscitated again and they still exist. So you all as liaison commissioners may have authority to discipline and supervise the performance or the conduct of your departments you liaise. But if they're unhappy, they can come to the full board and the full board could hear about it. So I, I'm just not sure it, it changes that much either way.
So I had one department head the other day say, "Okay, commissioners are here today, gone tomorrow." Another one said, and it was kind of in jest and kind of in fun, and another one said, you know, "Don't, don't give me that elected official thing again." But what does that mean? We went through an election. I went through two. And what did the voters say to us? "We like what you're doing or we believe you're working hard for the county. We trust you. You listen." Whatever, whatever, whatever reason, we're here. The founding fathers set up the three branches of government of the U.S. for a balance of power. That's why we have three commissioners. It's a balance of power. I am obligated to come before this board. And I mean, it's almost a moral obligation and a legal basis to say, "This is what's going on. I need help with this. I need your approval. If you're so inclined, here's where we are." When we have an unelected bureaucrat, I'm not saying that about Brad Rickert, okay? That's not fair. He hadn't been here long enough. But we've had unelected bureaucrats in this program that have exercised their authority. And they have gone against the voters, the citizens, and here we are, having this discussion right now. And the balance of power is being compromised. And that's not what the voters want. If you want to go to a five-member Board of Commissioners, I'm hearing words about that. Maybe that is best. But it's been declined two previous times in the last six years, eight years, whatever it is. So I just want to be able to do my job. You made the statement that the sheriff has the ultimate say in this county. No, he doesn't. That's against the balance of power. I don't know where you get that, but.
Read the statute.
With all due respect, I have read the statute. And he has a very important, precise responsibility that we all coincidentally, of course, support. But that balance of power is not ultimately, this guy has the final say. That's not, that's not accurate. And it's not good for the citizens. It's not good for a small local government like this, nor is an unelected bureaucrat that says, "You don't have to listen to that commissioner. Here's how we're going to do it. The consequences have been costly. Has to be repeated. And we have to change it back or we're going to lose more thousands of dollars in the next few years." Commissioner Pash?
I, I want to make clear, I, I'm not saying that, that the sheriff has the right to walk in here and tell us what to do.
Well, it came across that way earlier today.
What I'm saying is the sheriff has the ultimate authority of, of the final word in certain things in this county, even over the commissioners. And there are certain things that he does. And can I list them for you right now? No, I cannot.
Well, you're saying it again though, so please double check that before you tell the citizens.
I have double checked it. I've read it in, I've read it in text.
Our authority is ultimately a big responsibility. It's not the boss or the bosses. It, that authority equals responsibility. And that responsibility comes with a tremendous obligation. Mr. Herzog?
What I saw that first month is the sheriff's office, the road department, they run their departments. The sheriff's office is an elected position. And, and we've, we've said as, as a Board of Commissioners that we don't want, we don't want to, we're not going to liaison elected officials. But Rich is, Rich Christensen, the roadmaster, he is, he's got a, a great group. And I'm, I'm a little biased there because my daughter works there, but. And so those, those two gentlemen came before the board and said, "This is what's going on in the county. It's not good. This is what I'm hearing." Now, those two gentlemen, they don't allow that in their departments. They, they don't allow that. So we, what we had is we had avenues of, of people not feeling good about their jobs or something. And they get, instead of having, going to their department head, and it was, it was against the commissioners. And it, it shouldn't happen that way. And I hope I'm conveying that in a way that is understood. They wouldn't allow that in their departments, those people to come and, and reach out. So they, we can't allow that in this department. So through our Director of Operations, there was too much control over, and not, not enough with, with the liaison commissioners. And I hope I, I don't know if I'm making myself perfectly.
You make a very good point because we have people from other counties that are aware of what happened that day. And they're thinking county employees on county time are coming to a board and getting after the commissioners. And so that was a shocker. I learned a lot. I'm not sad for that day. But I was sad for the county in the sense that the counties, again, don't operate that way. They don't. So I think we're, I think we're on the right path here. I, I think you made a very good point there, Commissioner Herzog. I, I think this is going to take some time. I think it's going to take some really wise definition of what, how we're going to run this county in the, in the year ahead. I think we're all committed to a new day, a new direction. You heard me say today on the state of the county, "I'm going to be fierce on controlling cost." I mean, I, I, I want the, I want the citizens to know the amount of money that's been thrown away in the last four years is beyond staggering. And I know why they put me here. And that's not to be a rubber stamp to the contrary. So this has been a good discussion. I think the citizens have made it clear what they expect of us. You've just confirmed that. And I, I don't want anybody doing my job and I don't want to do Inbaos' job. But I do want the support to build the relationships. Frankly, Commissioner Pash, the relationship you have with Richard Christensen is a bonus, in my opinion, to the citizens of this county. That's what I believe. And your relationship with the sheriff. I've known him for years. I want the citizens to be able to take advantage of that. But they don't want you to be a rubber stamp and say, "Okay, I got a disagreement here, so we're going to change liaison commissioners tomorrow." That's not what they, that's not what they want. Go ahead.
I think, I, I want you to understand. I think you're, you're 100% right. The relationships that we have as liaisons with our different department heads is wonderful and it is a bonus to the county. All I'm trying to say is I'm nobody's boss. I am one person as a commissioner and I have nobody department head's boss. I don't want to be a department head's boss that says yes or no to things. It is the board's decision, in my opinion, to say yes or no to things. And all my job is as a liaison with, and I keep using Richard Christensen because he's the one we're, we're all talking about, is to bring the information that he would like to see brought to the board, to the board. And it's not my job to say if he's doing a good job or not. It's not my job to tell him yes or no on anything he's working on. My job is to bring to the board to make that decision. I'm not his boss.
Hey, we don't, again, we don't have disagreement there, but we're here to make some, especially in this day and age, to make some incredibly tough decisions. The people are counting on that. They didn't say, "Hire somebody else to make the decisions." That's what we hired you for. Do your job. That's what people are telling me. And I'm not going to shy away from the tough decisions. Sometimes it's very uncomfortable. The disagreement sometimes is very uncomfortable. But my job is to try and pull everybody together and really look for good government, good policy. And I am fully committed to that. And I believe, yeah. So that's all I have on this today myself.
Okay.
Anybody else? More discussion? Director Rickert? Okay. So.
Is that it for the workshop?
No.
Oh.
County consumption tax proposal.
Let's see, what time is it? We got time on that?
4:10. We've still got to have executive session.
Okay, I'm going to bring that up really quick. Do we have a mouse handy? Oh, never mind. Brad, I'm sorry. It's not on the big screen. So I'm going to defer this to next week, okay? So that way we've got 45 minutes to do our executive session.
You've still got public comments.
Which one is that?
Four. Number four on the agenda.
Okay, is that?
I see, I see Mr. Barnes here. I don't know if he wanted to make a public comment. That's all I was, I was saying.
I just wanted to speak when you were going to discuss the consumption tax. I wanted to speak about that. I was involved with the, I think I was the head of the group last year that took this over when you said you didn't have time to do anything on it. Commissioner Boyce, Commissioner Gold took it over. I ended up becoming the unofficial head of the group that she put together. So, you know, we've done, there is some work that has been done on it that I would like to discuss with you when it does come up again. So if you're not going to discuss it today, I'll wait, I'll come back next time.
I think I had no idea, first of all, you were in that position. So that's, I didn't know anything would carry on after Commissioner Gold took the apparent initiative there. What I'm thinking is probably next Wednesday, when we have, between nine and 12, when we have the two-hour Roadmaster workshop planned. So I, I think we should just defer that and, and that, that might be in the best interest. We ran out of time, but we did pretty good today overall.
I'm just saying that when the time comes that you're going to discuss it, I'd like to be involved in a conversation.
We'll make sure you're informed.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
So Mr. Rickert's going to put it on for next Wednesday?
Uh, if that's okay?
Oh, we're, that's right. I forgot. We're, we're having a.
I'll be gone, but I'll still participate in the meeting unless something happens.
So presumably, Director Rickert, that might be at 11 o'clock on Wednesday? So I, I really think you only need 20, 30 minutes on that. And then we might have one more to take us into the noon hour, but I'll talk to you about that when you've got time. We've got time, so.
I thought we were going to go earlier.
Nine to noon.
Nine to noon.
So there's two hours, nine to 11, and then.
Christensen's got the first two hours.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I, I missed, yeah.
That's okay. So we are going to recess this meeting and go into, no, we're going to close this meeting. Yeah. And go into executive session.
Back into, back into our other meeting.
So is it okay with you to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Okay with you to adjourn? February 17th, 2021, business meeting is.
workshop.
Workshop. Goodness sakes. Thank you.